So that's what they do. Because they were worried about the risk of having theirs. And so guess what happens? Somebody, there was some horse trading between the two meetings and the outcome was different than the other person. So first of all, the superintendent now is the new superintendent. He knows that it was five for and he went the other way the first time. So he's not in a very good position. He's not feeling very good about the job. The board, of course, looks ridiculous to the public. And it's just not a good way to start. So that's a, that's a good, that's a good caution I tell, I like to tell about how you, about both partnership and about not following the FOI. It's carefully understanding what you can and can't do based on what a posting says or doesn't say. Any questions about that? So as I've already told you, your superintendent is kind of runs the district on a bigger basis. With your, with your guidance and, you know, with your leadership, we work together to set goals for the district, but he really is the one who executes that plan. So how terrible is it if he starts out with a five to four vote that went one way, one week and the other way the next? And he's, he's the winner by virtue of the fact that he won the most recent vote. That's why you want to try whenever possible to work together collaboratively and we'll be talking about that throughout the meeting.
It's the first time we've gotten hacked.
Actually, for how many years have we been doing this? So it's pretty good.
So before COVID, you guys weren't hacked once?
That's great. That's, that's, that's probably something, you're probably in the top five over the years at the state.
We're top five.
Yeah.
And it's why we change our code every time, but we still got.
Well, that's still, still, if that's the first time, after all the remote meetings we had over the past four years, that's pretty, that's pretty good. So any questions about that? So let's, let's go over the FOI primer because then I want to get into the presentation. Phil's put together, I think it'll feel better if we just do this. So there are two different issues that the Freedom of Information Act pertains to. It's about meetings and it's about documents. The parts about meetings are as follows. Generally, your meetings have to be open to the public. You're a public agency, you're elected public officials, and your meetings need to be open to the public. Unless there's a designated permitted purpose for an executive session. And you've probably, those of you who've been on the board probably have been part of executive sessions from time to time. The most common one is personnel matters. Another common one frankly is a term of privilege documentation, documentation. There are a few other ones. Security, discussion of real estate you might want to acquire. That's not an issue for you because you guys don't acquire real estate. Town does that for you. So it's a very limited purpose. It didn't even list it here because it happens so infrequently. There is something called an emergency meeting. As I said, of the news is nineteen ninety-two, I have never had, one of my boards have to have an emergency meeting. The standard that you have to meet to have that is so high that that's immediate, it happens basically immediately. Something happens that morning, you need later that day. It's not posted either for twenty-four hours. What normally happens in those kinds of situations is Phil and his team will be taking steps on your behalf to address whatever the emergency situation is. You'll be maybe a day or two later and he'll tell you, here's what happened, here's what we've done so far, here's what I'm thinking of doing next. Let's talk about how you all feel about that as a board. So it's really going to be regular meetings and special. Regular meetings, you post a schedule for the year and you post it with the town clerk. And you can cancel those meetings, but those meetings are set, the regular meetings. You can add items to the agenda with a two-thirds vote at a regular meeting. And that's how it was worked. Special meetings are the ones that have to be posted twenty-four hours in advance at a minimum. And the agenda is limited to what you posted. So you can't add items, even by a two-thirds vote, to the agenda of a special meeting. Remember, a core of board members discussing board business is a meeting. And this is one of the little traps, FOI traps, people fall into. So I want to just talk about this for a minute. Obviously, other than members of one party, which we hope we're not doing because we hope we're not operating in a partisan fashion. Members of a board, even if it's a forum, if they're all the members of the same party, that's called a caucus. And that's not defined out of the definition of meeting. But if a group of board members that constitutes a forum, so four or more of you, are having a conversation about board business, that's considered a meeting. And if it's being posted, it's considered an illegal meeting. That's one of the pitfalls that some board members sometimes fall into. An interesting side piece to that is if four of you are emailing each other in real time about an issue. What the Freedom of Information Commission calls that is they call that a seriatum meeting. And they basically view that whole exchange as a meeting. And that also is illegal. So you have to be very, I'm not saying go never email each other. I'm not saying if you're the chair of a, of a committee, can we change our meeting time from seven to six thirty because so-and-so has this obligation? No one's gonna, you're not gonna get in trouble for things like that. It's like trying to line up votes, trying to actually have a substantive discussion of issues on email. That's something you really want to try to avoid as much as possible. Because you can easily fall into, when you start out with two people, then somebody copies something in and pretty soon it's four of you and now it's a meeting. And that's not allowed.
Can you talk about the situation? So I send a, an email to the group. We have a standard BOE that goes to everyone. It, it goes out individually and they don't respond to all, but they just reply to me. No issues. If they, if they're gonna provide simple feedback on something, that's not an issue.
That's not.
It's just when you're all communicating, that enough people get on together in that same group, that's where it becomes a meeting.
If we replied all, would that kind of prove a meeting? Yes. So what else? So if he sends you something, just he wants to give board feedback on it, just reply to Phil. Don't reply to all. That fits. I mean, I know that sounds stupid. It sounds like a technicality and I suppose it means one. But the Freedom of Information Commission, if we ever have the misfortune to appear in front of them together, you'll see that they're all about, they're all about technicality. They live for technicality. That's kind of, kind of what they do. So you just want to be aware of that. The other area is documents. Richard, all documents that you have are public and subject to disclosure. This includes emails between staff and board members or between board members, even on personal accounts. So this isn't limited to board business. This is anything that you, if you're working with each other, members of the public can see that. So it's very important to be careful of what you put into emails. It's, you don't want to put yourself in a situation, I always tell people is, and it usually comes up in emails in special education with parents, but I'll say the same thing to you guys. The email that gets requested is going to be the one that you're going to find most embarrassing. It's just Murphy's Law. The ninety-nine point nine percent of your emails are perfectly appropriate for what you find. The one that they're gonna hone in on and ask for is the one you're gonna wish you hadn't written. So it's just, it's something to be very mindful of. If you really need to have a conversation with one another, you're much better off having a face-to-face conversation or a phone conversation where, where written documentation is not produced. Do you have, do you?
Use their own specific?
They have their own emails, yes.
I would suggest that you use the email, the Willington Public Schools email that you've been provided. Rather than your personal email. If you do get a big FOI request and it does happen, it'll just save us a lot of youth. If you can honestly say, I only use my Willington email for school board business. I don't use my private account for that at all. The other piece of information that people find interesting, this is more an issue for Phil than it is for, for all of you, but just so you know, as members of the board. Freedom of Information Act pertains, when it comes to documents, pertains only to documents that actually exist. A lot of potential, Phil's office will give Freedom of Information if I say, you know, I want to know the education levels of all of the teachers at Central School. And the answer to that is, well, we can send you all of the resumes of the teachers there. We can make copies of them. But frankly, it's probably gonna end up costing you fifty cents a page. What they, what they want, what they're asking for generally when that happens is they want us to just create like a spreadsheet for them. We're not obligated to do that. If we have the document and it's, there's not some privilege, like somebody's social security number, somebody, you know, somebody's personal health information, we have to provide it. But we aren't obligated to create the document that gives the person the information they want in the format that they wanted. So sometimes, so if you ever hear from an I R A member of the community who said, well, I asked Stevens for this and this and this and he didn't give it to me. Chances are that's why. Either it's some kind of confidential information or more likely what they were really asking for is for Central Office to create a document for them that doesn't currently exist. And we're not obligated to do that. So that's an important distinction as well. Any questions about FOI? I'm sure it'll come up again as we go through the presentation. Okay, then let's move into the general part of it.
One thing that I think is important to know too, and this is something that, you know, is you go through professional development, you constantly learn these things. Is anything that you write. So someone's sitting in the audience, someone's watching our meeting, they're watching you write, taking notes on something. That is an FOI-able document.
It is.
They know it exists, they can see it. So if you write Phil Stevens is an idiot. And it's FOI-able, it's, you're not gonna, it's not gonna bother me. It'll be the first time, right? But those things are FOI-able. So you should know that. Just be cautious about the things that you write. And know that it's, it's, you know, it's visible.
Yeah, the same thing with, during public comment, look, as I said, I'm on, I'm on a board and I'm perfectly, I perfectly understand that there's public comment that's interesting and helpful and there's public comment where you're like, I can't believe this person is taking it like that. I wouldn't write that. Just think it, kick your neighbors, but don't write it.
The other thing you should all know about FOI is that when we get a request, it comes through me, it'll come to my office. We'll gather information and then before, usually we have a conversation, am I following the procedure? This is what was requested. I will make sure we have, that there's a price tag to it, that because we have to make copies, that it's an appropriate price. It's within the law of what we have to do. And oftentimes you'll hear someone say, well, I've never got these documents. I asked for them. Well, we're pretty lenient. We're pretty nice. If we're going to hand you a document because we had to generate it, it's, you have to pay the fee to get it. You don't get to see it without paying the fee. Where I say we're nice is I have allowed people to come into my office. They cannot take pictures, but they can view the documents in my office. They cannot take them with them and there's no charge. I don't know that you like that so much. But that's, I feel like there's a level of transparency there that look, that there's nothing to hide. If you want to come and see it, it's there. If you want to take it with you, we had to take the time to make those copies and it's there and it's, it's happened for.
I actually don't have a problem with that. The only concern I always have is that somebody needs to be with the person while they're looking at the file to make sure they don't take things. That, that's, that's the only precaution I would, would ask for in that situation. I don't think it's inappropriate. It certainly the law allows for it. I just think it's, it's important that the integrity of those records, particularly if somebody's looking through somebody's personnel records. You, you don't want somebody walking off with something or sticking something in, which has happened in a couple of cases I've had over the years.
Sticking something into documents.
So the person who filed the claim is, or the FOI is the person that would need to pay for the documents.
Yes.
For them to release them, you to release them to them.
You're allowed to charge by, by statute, you're allowed to charge fifty cents a page. And if it's going to be more than ten dollars total, we're allowed to say we want our payment upfront. We won't make the copy. We don't. That's to avoid the situation where we make, you know, Phil's office spends five hours copying a thousand documents. And then we say, well, you can have them, you can pay us five hundred dollars. Oh, well, I forget that I don't want them. So if it's going to be ten dollars or more, we count the pages, we multiply it by the fee and we ask for payment upfront.
How many do we get? Is that something that happens with Phil?
In the last year, we've had a few. It's, it's, I think it's something that it becomes a hot button issue, like certain people get on it. And next thing you know, it's just, they're, they come in. They are tedious. Because sometimes just to get to the, making the copies portion, it's someone's time and we're not allowed to charge for our time to do that.
Right.
Which is, can be an issue because one, one FOI request can take hours and hours and hours of work. And sometimes it's a couple of people, Brendan and I.
Well, and sometimes there's information in there that even though they're allowed to have the document as a whole, they're not allowed to have specific items in it. So then somebody has to go through it and black that out or have it taped, however the district decides to do it.
We had one last year that we had to redact a lot. And so Chris did a bunch, I did a bunch, and then it was like, here it is. And then it was like, I don't want to pay for it. So it's, you get stuck on those things.
And as, as a board, we have been asked to submit all of our emails for one, I believe.
Correct. So that's why your emails are so important, just to use your email for board business. Because you know, as an IT guy, as an IT guy, we, your email, we have an FOI request, Novus goes in, they access your email, they put in those keyword searches. And they pull your emails. So.
Well, and if, if it's just your Willington email, then our IT guy can do it. And you don't have the burden of going through your personal emails and trying to figure out which ones need to be given to Phil and what ones don't. So it's, I know it's a little bit of a pain, but in some ways it's actually easier. And if that's your email only for the board and your personal email is.
You had mentioned before about like if someone sees us taking notes, like how do they know? Like would I have to be like, here's my notebook, you know what I mean? Because somebody's presuming that I'm writing something.
Well, what would, what would happen if they asked for that is that you'd get it, you'd give it to Phil first and he and I would probably look it over and figure out.
My just, like my whole thing would be like, oh yeah, well, there, she mentioned the subcommittee, so here's what they're looking for. Or you know what I mean? Like, yes.
I threw grocery lists.
People will watch around, and this is just talking to other conversations with, with, you know, superintendents. It's, they watch for certain items. We're on a hot button topic, whatever it may be, and you're writing.
Okay.
They're gonna FOI based upon keywords and go and Samantha Sperry was taking notes during this time, adding keywords in that document. So that, I believe that's how that would be in fact.
Well, for example, one of the districts I represent is, I don't know if you've heard what happened in Hartford. It's very, very sad. A middle school child died of, of an overdose and that, I can't even remember how to pronounce it, the antidote. Would have saved him. And now that district, who I don't represent, and it's been in the paper, so I'm not telling you anything, couldn't figure out by reading it. So now that family is suing incredibly, basically saying it's negligent for you not to have Narcan available. So now a number of districts are talking about whether or not they should have Narcan on site, at least at their secondary schools. That's gonna be a hot issue. There are gonna be some parents that really, and some community members who aren't necessarily parents, who are gonna be opposed to that and they're gonna want, you know, it's gonna be, gonna be a lot of scrutiny around that issue. Not in every community. In some communities, I think it'll be a no-brainer. But it will, there will be some communities where that's kind of a hot button issue. So to your example, so you're basically sitting there with your handfuls and suddenly they start talking about Narcan and you're scribbling away. That's kind of that giveaway that, oh, she's, she's either very pro or very against. You gotta find out where she's coming from or not.
We just talked about that. That's one of our upcoming policies.
Well, it's, I don't, I don't want to. It's, it's definitely for the board to decide, but it's, I, I can certainly understand why a board might decide that that, that compassion would be.
So you have this presentation. Were there any other questions? Sorry, I just jumped. So storytelling is a really important way to make connections and learn. So I think that's one thing as we go along, you're gonna get some of the, hey, this is what happened. So Brianna and I talked about this presentation and we were talking, I was looking at Stackers at the Cape Conference. I got ahold of Stackers new board member packet and I pulled Tallons, I pulled several others. And as we started looking through it, I said, Brianna, we should think about doing something like this. And it kind of happened naturally through this process. I pulled a lot of their information out of various sources. And so it makes sense to go through a lot of this now. So even though this is professional development, a lot of this is tied to the, you know, a new board member and board member training and expectations and roles and responsibilities. So I flagged in here and I'll give you an electronic copy of this. All the policies. So if you click on anything that's in blue when you get the PDF, it's, it's a live link to our policy. So you can see what it is. And it clearly, if you look through, if you're gonna take some time, especially on the front side of, of coming into a new role, look at the nine thousand series. The nine thousand series is really around roles and responsibilities and the bylaws of the board. And it gives you a sense, and that's a lot of what we're gonna go through tonight, of what your role is and what you kind of want to stay away from. All right. You talked about FOI. Do you want to talk about freedom of speech and impact? For board members and what that looks like, social media in public at the board level.
And unlike public employees, which do give up some freedom of speech, right, by virtue of order of government, and we'll talk about that. That'll be our advanced program. Thank you. You don't lose your rights to free speech as members of the Board of Education. You don't have a right to simply blurt out anything you want at a board meeting. That, we're gonna talk a little bit later about Robert's Rules of Order, which is what this board uses and what most boards this size use to govern their meeting. So you can be ruled out of order, not for the content of what you say, for, for interjecting inappropriately, talking about something that's, we're on, we're on an end agenda item one. We're not here to talk about new school band uniforms, which is your particular issue that you're very concerned about. So you can be, you don't have freedom of speech at a board meeting. You simply blurt out whatever you want, whatever. You retain your freedom of speech to say whatever you wish on Facebook, Instagram, whatever platforms they now have. Given up, continuing to do anything, just staying with the old fashioned one, but I know how to work. But what I will say to you is, as, as a member of a, of a public agency, it would be who you to be careful about how you, so for example, we have a, I live in Grandy, not again. And we have, there's a Facebook page called Grandy Living. And then there's a kind of a rival Facebook page that calls itself something else. And the people on the rival Facebook page are constantly spreading, what can we decharacterize this, this information? So if you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission is about to do this. I of course know that that's completely not true. I've seen the agenda for this week and that's not on there. And I know of no plan to add it. And since it's a two-thirds majority, I probably have to vote yes for it to be added and I know nothing about it. I often have to resist the temptation, you know, like, please stop saying things when you don't know what you're talking about. Which, which feels really good, frankly, after a long day of working. Come home, you look at Grandy Living, like, oh, not again. It's not a good idea. I mean, really, you're, you should limit your discussion of issues that are before you to, to your meetings. You can't, you can't be forced to hear that. I'm telling you as you start out, but that's my advice to you, is to not engage with the public on social media about issues that are before you. And I've got, I had one client, there was, there were two kids. They started at my client's high school. Two days later, there was this incredible fight, just in, teachers were hurt. The cops hadn't been called. It was, it was just a mess. And of course, it's a small town, like most of our towns here in Connecticut are. And the rumors about how it happened and what it was about and who started it and how the principal should have broken it up sooner. It was all over social media. And the board members are seeing this and they're, the superintendents say, well, what the heck is going on in our high school? But it's really not a good idea to engage the public on board issues outside of a meeting of the board. It's really, as hard as it's gonna be when you think to yourself, look, we work hard, we're volunteers, no one's paying us to do this. All of which I agree with and respect highly. You're just, your life will be easier, Phil's life will be easier if you just don't engage with that. Once you start engaging, if you choose to go down that road, what you'll find is that's gonna become your new life. Once they know that you're willing to get into it, they're gonna, you know, you better start shopping in a different grocery store. You know, it's not going to the restaurant you used to go to. Because they're gonna have that expectation of you all the time. You know, if you, if it becomes necessary, if it becomes, if you have one of these hot button issues in town, I can work with Phil to give you all just kind of a two-line, you know, as a member of the board, it would be inappropriate for me to comment on board business outside of the context of a board meeting. Something very bland like that. That's not gonna make them happy, but believe me, it's gonna make your life easier. Just to have a rule from the outset, I'm not, I'm gonna talk about board business at board meetings, that committee meetings. Not on social media. So you have the right to do it. I strongly advise you not, not to do that. What you don't have the right to do is to speak for the board. You're a single, the only person who speaks for the board outside of a board meeting is the chair or your superintendent. As an individual board member, when you're not, when you're at a board meeting, you're a member of the board, you're one of seven people who are gonna make the decisions about the issues that are before you. When, when you're out of your role, as, when you're not in a meeting, as an individual board member, you don't speak for the board. And, and you shouldn't, you can't say, as a board member, I guarantee you, this is how this is gonna go down. You really only have power and authority in the context of meetings, whether it's a full board meeting or if you, if I know you have a committee structure, a committee meeting. You have, you have a say there as a member of that committee. Although my understanding is that you don't take, the way you operate your committees is that you, committees don't take votes, they just make recommendations to the full board. And it's the full board that votes. And that's a, frankly, that, that's a good process. And that, that's a the, you never want to be in a situation where somebody has to vote on something twice. Because you voted in committee, you voted one way, then somebody gets your benjurer and you change your vote and it's embarrassing. So the practice that you currently use is the one that I recommend. Have your committees just have a conversation and then let them, let the chair of the committee bring your, your committee's recommendation to the board. Any questions about that?
One of the things that personally I've talked about. When, and it's, it's in here a little bit later, but just thinking about if there's ever an issue and, and we'll get more into it further down the road here. But if there's ever an issue where you're getting, having a conversation with a parent, could be social media, could be something else, where it might land in front of the board. If you've done your own homework, you've been involved in those conversations, you might not be able to sit as a board member because of that.
I'll give you an example of that. When I talked about this, just this afternoon when we were kind of getting ready for this. A number of years ago, there was a residency, residency issue for one of the boards that I work with. Residencies, you can only come to the Willington Public Schools if you're a resident of Willington or there's some other special arrangement. So sometimes people sneak into districts and they want, they don't like their school district for whatever reason, they'd rather come to Willington. They like your smaller schools better than the large, the large schools they have in their district, for example. And sometimes we end up having to do residency investigation. And if Phil determines that it's his belief, based on whatever, whether it's surveillance, whether it's information he receives from parents or staff, that a particular student doesn't live in Willington, they have a right to appeal his finding to you, to the board. They, then they can appeal your finding to, to a state agency, but you wouldn't be involved in that. So I had this client, he was a lawyer, and I think I can say this, sometimes lawyers think they're smarter than they actually are. And so he thought, well, I, I know where that house is. I'm gonna do my own surveillance. He wasn't a very busy lawyer. And so he did, conducted four or five surveillances and he, they never saw it. One of the things, one of the ways you prove that people probably don't live there is no one ever leaves the house. The kids don't, the kids aren't there when the bus comes. They don't ride the bus and then you find it. A lot of times it's our secretaries that catch these things. They notice that, you know, that kid never rides the bus. What's up with that? So anyway, so this, so this, this lawyer goes, you know, marching self-importantly into the superintendent's office and says, hey, look, Phil, you have done all the surveillance. He says, well, I hate to tell you this, but this means, first of all, we can't use your surveillance because you're not, you're, you're not a member, you're not a member of the staff. And secondly, you can't sit now and make a decision about this because you've, you've made up your mind. You've gathered information outside the hearing. And secondly, you can't sit now and and make a decision about this, because you've, oh, you've made up your mind, you've gathered information outside the hearing. You know, whenever something's gonna come before you guys, you have to, you have to be impartial, and you have to base your decision based on the information shared with you at the hearing. Now, if somebody, I had a case once where there was a, a tenured teacher was gonna be terminated. If the tenured teacher decided, um, in his infinite wisdom, that he was going to have a public termination hearing, as opposed to a private one, which is how they normally are. You're not required to stick your heads in the sand, but it's not, if you're watching Channel Three Evening News, and the Wellington story comes on, you don't have to, like, run out of the room. You don't have to, you don't have to fight to be ignorant of the information, but you can't seek it out. You can't, you can't do your own investigation, you can't say, oh, I know that family, they definitely don't live there. You you have to, you have to be impartial, because these things can come before you, that's gonna be true of residency and transportation disputes, student discipline issues, we had, mercifully, we had, I don't think about any of those since I've been. Teacher terminations, which are very rare, but when a tenured teacher gets terminated, the very last step in that process is, comes before you. The, there's a hearing panel will make a recommendation, but the ultimate decision rests with you. So you've really gotta stay out of that stuff, so that when it comes before you, we can honestly say the board was impartial, they had no prior knowledge of this, they weren't involved in it. So that's another, another reason why you wanna kind of keep out of the fray and just conduct your board business as board members in meetings.
And we have timelines for several of those things, so I might be dealing with something where someone reaches up to you. Just cast a line and see if you're gonna bite. I'm, I might be following a timeline that might not be anything in your role yet. Usually, a lot of those things, whether it's transportation or residency, things like that, even teacher termination, they typically go away before, because of the work we do prior to getting to the board level. But if you are engaged during that time, and it does get to the board level, it can be an issue, so I just, I think it's important for you to know. We just did an opening statement here, nothing wild here in the board handbook. If you have ideas of what to add to this, uh, one thing that was already requested was a staff list and kind of role, not necessarily emails phone numbers, but just a staff list with, you know, positions. You'll get that as part of your board budget book, but we're also gonna, we can put it in this as well. The key word for school boards, your job here is about continuous improvement, we know that. It's through your instructional programs, you have to align your your resources, which is your budget, to meet that instructional program for continuous improvement and have a good climate as you go. So those are things that we work towards on a daily basis. So as I'm developing the budget right now, I'm aligning them to the instructional approaches that we're trying to do and all the curriculum changes. And the continuous improvement document that we talked about, that's in this board framework. So this board framework goes through twenty twenty four. So we'll be talking about an adjustment to this, um, an updated version at the end of this year to move into the start of next year. And the idea is to try and develop another multi-year plan. And that's what drives our decision making, your decision making process as you go. This should be, hey, it's in our goals, it's in our goals. When something's in the budget, it's not frivolous, it's in the, it's in your budget, because it's tied to something that's part of this. So this is always a fun one, so this came from Cave. I I modified it a bit and shortened it until live link is there, but essential attributes of the good board member. What, what do you think jumps out at you there, that as a? I mean, they're probably all important, but are there any that really jump out at you, or you make, make you a tad nervous?
The middle one, get all the information, like, nervous after having that conversation with her.
It's hard, right? So that's, I'm glad you said that one, get the information necessary to make good decisions. You have to trust that the information I'm giving you is the information, and that's what I have. And if I'm not giving it to you, it's because I either can't, or I don't have it. So anything that I, and sometimes, you know, if you put me on the spot in a board meeting, you might hear me say, let me gather that information for you, and I'll get back to you. Some things we, you don't want to have those conversations in public. Sometimes you did, you may hear my answer afterwards, after I've gotten some time to to gather the information. And I might send it in an email to you, give you some more information outside of a board meeting, that then you go, I wanna talk about this in public and make sure we are all on the same page, and the public knows how we stand on this issue. But that's a hard one, because people expect that you're going to have all of that information. Like, I get every detail, and that's not necessarily the case. You will get, if it gets to that further, you know, example that she'd given, some of those examples, whether it's around, you know, transportation, or even an expulsion hearing, you won't have details up to it. But once you get to the expulsion hearing, you're gonna have details. And those are things that, it's important to know that there's a process. And that information I'm giving you, I'm doing it according to policy, sometimes I'm doing it according to law. And it's really for your own protection, and quite frankly, my protection.
So I'll give you a quick example of that, there was, years ago, I was involved in a teacher termination proceeding. This guy really, he really was engaged in criminal conduct. And he was a very, very angry, very loud person, he would get up at board meetings and spin all these wild conspiracy theories months before he was finally terminated, and he wasn't terminated for that. But because he was such a public person, and I knew he would be coming to board meetings and talking about his case, I advised the superintendent to inform the board that the termination proceedings had commenced. Just so that they wouldn't be blindsided by this guy coming to a meeting and yelling, okay, they're trying to fire me, blah, it's unfair, I'm being railroaded, blah, 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 blah. But I also explained to him that, you know, you can go in executive session and do this. We're gonna send a letter saying, we're gonna tell the board, your termination proceedings of an institute against you. We're gonna do that in executive session unless you ask to have it done in public session. And I said, but you're gonna have to be careful, because they're gonna wanna know more, and you've gotta say to them firmly, I can't tell you any more than this, because when we get to the backend, you're gonna have to make a ruling on it. And so I need for you not to know what it's about from me, I need for you to find out what it's about from the fact finders report, which will be shared with you prior to you having to to make a vote. So that's an example where normally you wouldn't be told about it, but because I knew this was gonna come up as a big publication issue, the superintendent and I decided it was better for the board to have the heads up that the hearing had commenced, just so you would know. But you still can't have the details, because we need to keep you pure as decision makers on the backend.
It's probably the most frustrating piece for board members. Cause some of that stuff is gonna be on social media, right? Some of it could be on the news at that point, depending on how big it is. And you won't have that information until.
Well, and families are gonna, people are gonna come to you, hey, what's going on with Mr. Smith? You know, I hear he was a pervert or something, you know, and you really say, I really, I I don't have those details, and I'm not supposed to have them, and there's a process that, and at the end of the process, that's when all the information will be available. So that is hard, that's, that's a hard thing to learn. Again, I can't stress enough, though, if you, if if people get the vibe that you're the guy, or you're the woman, who they can call up and wheels in information out of you, then that's your new life. Once they think they've got some, they've got somebody they can get this move from, particularly if the rest of your board members are being good about it and not doing that, and you're the only one, then they're just gonna be all over you. I mean, it's just, I've seen it too many times. It's, it's, it's really one of these, ounce of prevention is worth a pound of juice situations.
Any other items on there that you figure you want to talk about, or that is not on there that you think would be important? Keep moving. So this is from, like, a another one from Cave, and they obviously changed its mistake as board members make. If you take a second to look through these, I think the, from my perspective, the dropping a bomb on a board meeting, for me, uh, I kind of shared that a minute ago, if you drop a bomb on me and you you leave something there, I'm, I'm not gonna have the information, I won't be prepared for it unless I have some background information, but a lot of times, it takes me time to gather information and give you response. So if you say, superintendent, what's, you know, I need this information right now, I might not have it. And so I will not do the same to you. And so one of the things that, and this could be a bomb against each other. Well, it could be against the chair, it could be against the superintendent, it could be against the public, like, those are things that we wanna make sure that we minimize for our own efficiency. Because it doesn't help us moving forward, it doesn't help you as a board moving forward. Any others there that you're looking at that you wanna talk about, or anything that you wanna address on that thing?
One, one way of dropping a bomb that I think superintendents find particularly frustrating is when board members kind of get together behind everybody's back and decide they're gonna add an item to the agenda. When that happens, it almost always happens illegally, because by definition, there's been a meeting of more than a quorum among you. There's, you've met that two thirds ma- majority number to add an item to the agenda. So you're putting yourself and the board at risk of an FOI complaint, first of all. But also, if there's a need to add an item to the agenda, just reach out to the chair. Or reach out to Phil, saying, well, this, this happened, I think you should add it to the agenda. And then we can get, somebody can move to put it on the agenda, if there's two thirds vote supportive of it, then it gets added to the agenda. Things can add it to regular meeting agendas all the time, I'm not saying don't add things to any agenda. I'm saying, don't blindside people by coming, you're coming in, I had, this happened to me just before the Christmas holiday, I had a, there were board members that wanted to add an item to the agenda that was really designed to embarrass the board chair and the superintendent, that was the purpose of adding it to the agenda. And you know, that's, obviously, that's no way to do business. So that, that's, that's a really important one. And you know, if you want, if there's, so let's say there's an item on the agenda, and you get your board packet, and the board packet has the information that Phil is gonna share with you. If there's, if there's an additional piece of information you'd really like to see, just reach out to Phil and say, you know, I was surprised that it didn't include this. His answer may be, well, here's why we didn't include it, access to that, the state hasn't produced that report yet. But it might also be something simply, well, I'd like to see the data, you know, configured this way, it's an easy thing to do. Phil can push three buttons and give it to you, and don't give it to you. Rather than bringing it up at a board meeting and making, trying to make it look like he has, you know, the administration's hiding something, or they didn't do a thorough job. If you have, if there's information you want that you haven't received, it's really much better to reach out to the administration and ask for that privately, rather than do it in the context of a meeting.
Any items on there that you want? So we just put in, again, you noticed, cause you just looked this, we pulled a lot of this right straight from policy. So the the officers around there, the policy is linked at the bottom. So I think that's pretty straightforward, what you do there, that's new. Board chair comments. Do you wanna talk about any of these specific things? I dropped in the, that you may interrupt a speaker for these reasons only, from a couple of references, and that was really around the Robert's Rules stuff. But do you wanna talk about anything that's on there?
Not anything particularly that's on there. I did wanna take a quick opportunity just to say that Phil had mentioned that we're a trust. And I trust that you all want to be here. You weren't forced to sit here, you chose it, actually, and that you wanna do the work. And I trust that you all have the best of intentions for our students. And I also trust that anybody at this table can be respectful, flexible, open minded, and work collaboratively. So I just wanted to start with those few trust statements, because I think that's important for us to be able to know that about each other, and for me to say to you all. And I do hope that you'll share things that work well in our meetings as far as structure, or if I do things a certain way and it works well, I love that feedback. And likewise, if there's something that's not going right or not working for you, please let me know. I just got this seat a little bit ago, as you know, so I'm happy to have any sort of feedback. And I do feel the weight of representing this group, and I take it very seriously. So let's make sure, please, that I make us look good. However, I would do, and I do look forward to getting to know you all a little bit better, too, I mean, so we do our parents in this, in this community, and your grandparents. Some have little ones that are grown up, and some of us have big ones that are about to move on, right? So we have that in common, and we all belong to this community. So I just wanna, hope, hope we can keep those things in our work together well.
So the nine thousand series, there's two that are connected to this, again, are part of the roles and responsibilities by laws of the Board of Education, again. Take the time, this was not done by this board, this was, this has been around for a while. And it's probably something that you would see tied to any board, right? Just expectation of how things can run efficiently, how you can work together, how you can really maximize your efforts in your time volunteering. So take a peek at that when you get a chance. The construction of the agenda, again, is another nine thousand series, it's done through myself and the chair. I will typically post them, like, next weeks will be posted sometime tomorrow, the town office building is closed on Fridays now, which is why I can't post on Fridays. And I think Monday's too late. So we'll post them on Thursday, so if you have items that you want on, it's just set, get them to me early, again, Chris already mentioned. You can add an item to a regular meeting, you cannot add them to a special meeting agenda. You can't stray from what's on that special meeting agenda. If there's time, say we post, sometimes I've said this before, say we post the agenda tomorrow, and you see the posting and you say, oh, I wish this was on it. You, sometimes it's, will be important enough where we have enough time, I can go back and I can amend the agenda upstairs. I don't like doing that, but I would, if it's something important that we have to deal with upon week, we can do that. And one of the reasons we would do that is that we don't wanna surprise the public. So I'm talking about dropping the bomb, like, I don't, the things that you wanna add to the agenda on Tuesday at the meeting shouldn't be things that we really wanna make sure we have feedback, and people are watching. It's, you want the people in the room, you don't want the five hundred and fifty views on YouTube afterwards, if that makes sense.
Right, I mean, an example of something you might add, I don't know if you have a personnel report as part of your regular agenda. So if there's a, an unanticipated resignation comes in between the time it's posted and the time of your meeting, it wouldn't be inappropriate to add that information, that's so and so has, so and so has resigned or is resigning, affected at the end of the school year. But if it's something like, you know, we're, we're looking at, it's going to be the first reading, a complete revamping of the student discipline policy. That's something that we would want to have on the agenda at the time it's posted, because that's something that people might really care about, or really wanna be heard about. And you don't wanna do something even that creates the appearance that you're trying to limit public's, the public's ability to know what you're doing, and to be present, and to hear, and to, and to say what they have to say.
So all our, we're kind of duplicated on the Board of Ed side, so all of our agendas are on the school website side, as well as the town side. It's intentional, because I think a lot of people go to the town side to find Board of Ed. It used to just be on the Board of Ed website, and people would complain, so we just do it on both now. Same thing for minutes, the YouTube recordings are up there, which are great. The follow-up now, the new law requires that anything like this, any of these documents are published now. So they're gonna be on the website the next day, unless it's something that you have prior to, it'll already be there. So the one document that we're always still giving to you for board meetings is the budget document. Something I got from, from Donna, and so once I have that, it just goes up the next day. We typically are putting all of those board documents only on the board side, if that makes sense. But that's something that we're required to do now. You've got your year to glance, so this is just a snapshot to know what's coming. This is what I review, it, this is something that didn't exist one of the pre-Phil Stevens, and I kind of wanted a snapshot. So this is just how I look at the year, if you wanna move things, we, this is flexible. So sometimes, we don't have a rapport, or the Student Activity Fund, you know, the audit hasn't happened until October. Things get moved around here, so, but this is kind of the core of when I'm starting to develop an agenda, this is what I'm looking at. If you think things. If you think things are missing on here, uh, that's something that we should, this is the, a fluid document. We can make those adjustments. Chris talked about the meeting types there, the regular meetings, special meetings, and emergency meetings. Um, the only thing I'll add about this is the special meetings we have in our policy, um, that we have the, the work sessions or a retreat that's, that's considered to be a special meeting for us. It falls under that category. Um, you do need a quorum, you need more people to, to hold a meeting. My, I'm interested to see what you say on this, but my suggestion is some boards might not have a forum but wanna just have discussion and take no action. I feel like that's not valuable because you're gonna have discussion again, so I'm not sure.
I, yeah, I agree with that. And it also makes, I, I also don't think it looks good to the public that you, that you're, you're having a meeting. You're basically having a meeting at which you can conduct no business. It just looks, it looks odd to people.
So, I'm not gonna go through all the Robert's Rules, uh, and Brianna said, this is like the third time this sheet's been in front of me, what's going on? So we put a cheat sheet out in front, um, when I put out your nameplates, there's a cheat sheet out there. If anybody wants to see during meetings, there you also have, um, there's three slides here for Robert's Rules, just to give you background. Most of the things that we do are pretty straightforward. A motion, a second, discussion, and a vote. Every now and then, there's quirky things that happen. And so this is a reference in this guide, there's a reference there that we always have at our meetings. And then, um, um, uh, these aren't numbered, but the, there's a Robert's Rules quick reference guide about like, hey, what has to be seconded? Can it be amended? What's the vote that needs to happen? Is it two thirds or a majority? So these are straight off that, um, that Cornell website, all of that information is, it's, it's snapped, uh, into, into this document. But the idea is just so if you wanna get yourselves, Robert's Rules is, is literally a book. Some of the things in there are really convoluted. Everybody says they do Robert's Rules, but we probably do like a very, very, very narrow.
Remember, Robert's Rules applies not only to boards like you, but there are Robert's Rules that pertain to things like the Democratic or Republican Party Convention, you know, a huge body proceeding. And so when you, if you do take the time to read through the book, you're gonna say, well, this is never gonna happen at our meeting. And you're probably right about that because it's designed to be used for many different size and types of meetings. It's just, uh, most of what you'll use, it's, it's just a way to keep order at a meeting, to make sure the business is conducted and completed. Um, and a lot, like I said, a lot of the stuff in Robert's Rules, I've never used it. So, and, yeah, you won't.
One of those, I think, where Brianna will probably ask for grace, anybody who's been chair asks, asks for a little bit of grace. We used to turn to Herb and say, hey, Herb, you've been here forever, can you give us some, some feedback on how to do this? So I think when we get to, if you get to a point, and you will get to some awkward point like, how do we handle this? It's okay for a board to slow down to make sure you do it right.
Absolutely.
Um, and that's probably important to do. Sometimes it feels like it's, you know, stone, stone walling something. But it's better to do it right than have to go back and have that conversation again because it wasn't done properly and someone calls the board on. Um, and so that's why, you know, the cheat sheet is there and the guide. And if you ever have a question, I think it's okay to say, you know, can we, can we check on how we're doing this procedure? Um, public participation in board meetings, uh, is, is a topic that has come up often. Um, and especially when this is part of the school building committee conversations about how do you do a meeting through, you know, follow Robert's Rules? And, you know, you have presence to speak. Some boards, some attorneys don't like presence to speak uh, because it opens things up and it's, you know, you're meeting in public, you're not a public meeting. Um, but you have to be prepared if you have those presence to speak times to be able to listen. Uh, we have it twice. So that's more than most boards have. Um, I think people are still, and, and Arthur mentioned this today, during our policy meeting, this is one of the things, one policies that we wanna look at. But trying to identify better ways, uh, and it really should be written into our policy of how we implement it um, to solicit feedback and be able to respond and not just stare and say thank you very much. Uh, when we held the data meetings, uh, the last data meeting where people could be in the audience and, and ask questions, uh, it does put me on the spot. I'm gonna tell you flat out, it puts me on the spot. Um, I think that's okay sometimes. I think that's, that's a good approach. But we have to make sure we have it written in policy. It's not real clear yet. Um, it's, but it's something to consider. Uh, and as soon as you start the dialogue, it's, you just wanna make sure you're also keeping the efficiency of your meeting.
I think that's true. The other thing I would say is, and, and, and here's where I just think you really have to think about this carefully. Um. If you, if you're going to do that in certain circumstances and not others, your policy needs to address that, it needs to say that. The board reserves the right to, um, have, have public, um, have public comment and response in areas as the board needs, but that's just off the top of my head. If you wanna go that way, I'll work with Phil to develop some language. The other thing you really need to be careful about is if you're gonna have a time rule, you've gotta enforce it. I can't tell you how many boards I've worked with where, you know, the, the PTO is getting, person's getting up to talk about the end of your party and how wonderful it was, and, um, almost all the board members were there, and that was great, and all this happy stuff. And he or she is allowed to talk for much longer than your typical limit. And then another guy got, gets up and wants to talk about how you're wasting his money, and you're all cruts, and it's all, you're just terrible people, and you're the worst board ever, and you cut him off strictly at the five minute mark. You really can't do that. You're gonna have a five, you either have to enforce your time or not enforce it, and then you have to take what you get. Now, that doesn't mean you have to, they can't swear at you, they can't yell at you, they can't be abusive, they can be, if they are, you can, you can tell them that they're out of order. But you really can't, you can't enforce the timeline for, for speakers you don't like. But let the ones you do like go on Edna Zoom. So that's something you really have to be mindful of.
And that would be the chair, and that frankly, but correct?
You, sometimes, if you, if you're gonna have, sometimes you have a meeting and you just know that there's gonna be a huge number of the public present. I'll give you an example. I represent a very small district. Um, and, and actually, it's, it's a regional school district, but they have three small schools for each, one for each of the three towns that they, and then their middle school and high school are together in the region. And one of the, one of the elementary schools, the, um, the enrollment had dipped so far that the proposal was to create a split grade class. We'd have third and fourth graders together in the same class. Um, and obviously, that's gonna be very, very controversial, at least for parents of everybody in those two grades. Well, maybe not everybody's, you know, maybe some of them will say, well, being the superintendent, he's one of the good guys, and you know, so I'm gonna give him the, the, the. So, one of the concerns I have about the board chair being the time keeper is it can give the impression that you're not really listening. You're just waiting, you pers- you, in your case, Brianna, would be you. Um, I chaired the Affordable Housing Committee in my town. And when we had our public meeting with public comment, I had somebody else timing because I didn't want it to appear that I wasn't listening and I was just staring at my phone and you see when the three minutes were up. So you may wanna designate, and I don't know, does, do you have a board secretary that it's not, or not, not an elected board secretary, but it's Secretary of the Board who does the minutes for you, it's like that?
We do, but they don't have to be here.
Okay, okay.
What if we put it on TV? Just put a timer on and just let it run?
That's great. I mean, that would work. I just.
It would be shared screen, it would be a way for Dylan, who's like, is the person if they're talking, that's the person that's on Zoom. I can think about that.
The time, everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's nothing, I think that's a great suggestion because that really is just everybody's being treated exactly the same way, and it's very transparent. It's right up there on the screen, everyone knows it. Um, I think that's a great idea. I just don't, I mean, at the, at the hearing that I'm talking about, that the hearing about the split grades, I, I did it. I, I did the timing for them because I was at the meeting because they wanted me there because it was, it was gonna be riot. Um, like a literal riot, not like a ha-ha riot. Um, so I, so I did, I, I did, I just was the one who said, I'm sorry, I'm gonna thank you for your, for your time is up. Um, but it's just, it's, you're gonna, if you're gonna do it, you wanna, I think, the, the, one of the first things Phil said is probably one of the most important things to be said about this. If you're going to have public input in your meetings, you want it to be, um, you want it to be where possible useful. And you want it to not interfere with the order and the operation of your meetings. You know, I can't stress this enough, you guys are volunteering to do this. You all think, I'm sure many of you have jobs. I'm sure those of you who don't have jobs have lives that consist of other responsibilities other than a work responsibility at this particular moment. You, you don't wanna be here till eleven o'clock at night so that everybody can come and yell at you. Um, and it can degenerate into that. Uh, I used, I represent, I used to represent a district where literally their meetings would go from eight till eleven every time. And there was always something strange was gonna happen. I would, I would stay up till eleven, and I would turn on the news. If they didn't make the news, the TV news, I'd say, all right, we'll make the TV news. Then the next morning, I'd look at the Hartford Courier, like, all right, didn't make the front page. And then if I turned to the town section, they didn't even make the front page of the town section, that was a very good one. Um, so it's, it's, it's important to, what I'm trying to say is it's important, you don't want people to feel that you don't care what they say. Um, but you don't want it to get so out of hand that it basically takes over your meeting and makes it so that if you, because you have real business, you need to conduct it here. So that, that's, it's just, it's a, it's a balance.
Comments, questions, thoughts? That's a big conversation. This town has been dying for across multiple boards. I don't know that anybody's had a, you were just saying today, the selectmen that made some adjustments there.
Made some changes to theirs and prepared for a lot of arguing.
So try and, try and, we'll see what happens, you know, moving forward, trying to find a way to still allow you to do your job. But I think that feedback, that, that data type meeting where people could ask questions, I think, was good. And then gave people the accurate information, which is what you want.
To the end of the school building committee, did we have the chair respond kind of a, like a overall response to some of them?
So there's, in your policy, this is another nine thousand series policy, another nine thousand number. Um, there's a, a comment in there, I believe, that's about clarification.
Hmm.
That is, you know, I don't wanna call it misinformation, maybe it's just something that's slightly inaccurate that the board chair can clarify. Um, and you, it's important probably for you to look at that, Paul, read that policy carefully. Um, but it's one of those things where it, again, you open it up to, to, one, you just have to be cautious that, that someone could call you out because someone said something else and you didn't clarify their point. Um, so those are always things that are pretty important.
Yeah, I, I tend to be of the view that, um, you should, you should listen politely and attentive to public comment but not get into it with the people. Um, for one thing, it's, let's say it's time on your agenda, you haven't voted on it yet. And so if you do say, oh, well, that's not what we're gonna do, you can't say that. The vote hasn't happened yet. You don't know what, how your fellow board members are gonna vote on that particularly, right? Um, even, I don't think it would even be appropriate for the chair to say something like that because even though she runs the meeting, she doesn't know how you guys are all gonna vote. Um, I mean, some, what, what's, sometimes what I've seen done is you'll have a number of people come. Most of the time when it gets hot like this, it's because there, there's, it's a concern that's shared by enough people that you're gonna hear it a number of different times. Um, what I've sometimes seen done is at the next meeting, uh, the board chair and Phil come up with a response that the board chair then needs, you know, a lot. Number of people are very concerned about what, you know, what the board's gonna do about a nar camp. We understand, we, we understand the concerns, we've, we've, we've listened to them, discussed them. Um, we didn't, it wasn't appropriate to us to, for us to respond in the meantime because the board hadn't made a decision yet about that and that policy wasn't on our agenda that night. Uh, there, so there are ways you can do it in a more controlled fashion. But yeah, it, I'm very wary, I mean, I don't, the structured question and answer that sounds like you had on data, that's fine. That's, that's, you're planning for that, that people are coming with that expectation that they're gonna get a response. But just generally responding to people who are speaking to in public comment, um, it's almost never a good idea, it's like.
So Chris mentioned executive session. There's the, the reasons you have to be specific why you go into executive session. Uh, a couple of things. Number one, don't take notes when you're in executive session.
Definitely.
Um, don't write anything down. I'll give you examples of the, uh, that I can talk about it now because it's past and it's public. Um, several years ago, we had an executive session with a board that was around potential properties. When you were evaluating Board of Ed, preschool building committee was looking at pop properties. Um, I presented properties to the board to show them what types of things that were available out there for new school. Things that you didn't want to show in public because you didn't want the price to skyrocket now because Samantha Sperry's property is for sale and, or not for sale, and now she's gonna say, well, it's two million dollars because I know you want it. Um, so things like that. But when you go into executive session, you shouldn't be taking notes. Um, there's no votes ever done in executive session. It's basically time in, time out. You can't add things when you're in executive session. You go in for a very specific reason. You have that conversation, uh, it's treated just like anything else where the board chair would, you know, solicit feedback from everybody. And then once the discussion is over on that particular point, you exit executive session. Sometimes there's a vote right after executive session based upon the conversation that was there. Sometimes in executive session, you'll even discuss, discuss a motion and say, hey, when we come out of executive session, what should our motion be so it's specific? Those are things that, um, sometimes I would prepare for you as a draft. Doesn't mean you can't change it, but I would give you a draft for those types of things, and then you can come out. The discussion has already happened typically, even though you're having a motion after executive session, and there's a second, and then there's still time for discussion. Realize that discussion moment has really, for the most part, already happened.
Well, and there's a reason you, you decided to go into the executive session because you didn't wanna have a discussion in public. So then to turn around and come out of executive session and have the discussion again in public kind of defeats the purpose of having gone in the executive session in the first place.
Questions about executive session?
Which is basically a private meeting.
It is. So for us, it's basically, everybody is clear to this space or we would leave this space. I, I'm not quite sure here. I mean, this is, we've had people like stand in the hallway there, uh, that doesn't work. Um, it's gotta be private.
Yeah, with this structure, with this, in this building, it might almost make sense to let the public stay here and you guys go into Phil's conference room.
Conference room, something like that.
That one's.
We've done that before, yeah.
Uh, that's probably, uh, that, that's, that's probably the better, the better approach just because it's, it's.
Right.
An open space like this. Um, I've seen it done, it depends on, some, some of these, some boards have had meetings in these big, you know, like council, like council chambers because they have that, because they have like a, a big town council. Um, a place like this where the, all the room you meet in is basically, there's no way to seal this room off. You're probably better off, if you want it to be private, you're probably better off letting the public stay here than going into Phil's conference room to have your conversation and then come, walking back in here, announcing that you're out of executive session and then take whatever votes or vote.
It was very easy on Zoom, that's all I'll say. Everybody out, let them back in.
But if somebody is with, one of our members is virtual, we have to take them with us and move everyone else to a leaning space, right?
Right, and there were, there were, um, a lot of questions and how do we guarantee if you are, if we do go, if you do go into executive session and you happen to be sick, you're not in person, you're on Zoom, you would, like, your spouse walking by shouldn't be there, your children, whoever it may be, that's not the executive session. And if you can't do that, I think the right thing to do is just excuse yourself from the executive session.
Yes.
So if you can't guarantee that's gonna happen, someone has the right, another board member has the right to say to you, you know.
Your wife can't, or your husband can't listen in, your grandkids can't listen in, your children shouldn't, your babies that are gonna be listening in. And yes, you do have the right to, to, to make that an issue.
Keep going. So the work of the board. Again, you're a policy group. I'm the administrative reg side. Um, this is again, part of the nine thousand series, how the, how this works. So your policies are what guides the, the districts and how I manage the district. Okay? So when you have clear policies, it's very clear how I manage. Uh, if there's gray and that might be intentional, you give me latitude. Uh, if there's no policy on the board policy side. I have to look to see if there's one, either something in statute or federal. And so, or if we put something into a handbook. So kind of layered out here for you, like the levels. You've gotta follow federal law, you've gotta follow state law, then there's board policy. And board policy has to align with state and federal law. If there's no board policy, but then we put something into a handbook, that is considered to be a policy. It's not necessarily a board policy, but it acts as like an administrative regulation. Something that we've put into place as part of the management of the district. And so that's where you see then that school policy is the bottom. Sometimes some policies say. The superintendent must write an administrative regulation of how this policy will be implemented. It's written right in and it's mandatory that I have you approve that regulation. Some policies say there's a regulation, but you don't approve it. It's just, I write the administrative reg and it's attached online. Okay, so there's, depending on what the policy is, and sometimes there's no administrative regs at all. It's just a straightforward policy. Um, but know that people always wonder like, what's the layer of policy? And when you see policy. At the bottom, you'll see case law written out. If it applies, it's there. Um. If there's, someone will say, well, there's no policy on the Board of Education website. There's a reason we have a sign off on handbooks at the beginning of the school year. That is a layer of policy of expectation of how we operate the district for families. And it might be in the handbook and directly aligned or exactly verbatim. What is in your board policy? Depending on what it is. When you get into things like bullying, it needs to be consistent.
Right. It really has to. We really, whatever your board policy is, you take your board bullying policy and we just. Cut it and paste it right into the handbook because that's what the law says we have to do. You have to. Your, your, your policy has to have certain features and that policy has to be broadcast and the broadcast part is. The handbook and obviously heading on your website is also part of that. Uh, one thing, just a quick thing to say about policy. My, I am from the school of less is more when it comes to policy. I mean, if it's a policy that you don't need to have, generally speaking, I don't recommend it. I, I'll give you an example, very, very quick example. Um. I, I, um, one of the larger districts east of the river here used to have a policy. I don't know how it came to pass, some parent, this, this, it's, it's gonna be deja vu when I hear what it was about. The parents wanted to be able to challenge library books. The answer to that is of course, no, you don't have a right to challenge library books. We're not gonna have a policy about it. But at some point, they put this policy in, on the books and. It resulted in a three day hearing about a book by an author named, I think her name was Carolyn Cormier. And it had something to do with vampires. And it went on for days. They paid. Thousands and thousands of dollars in legal bills. They have lawyers that are running this three day hearing for them about a library book. Uh, if you, if you decide that's something you want to do. I'll work with Phil to help you develop language that's, you know, that's very streamlined, that it has a process, it's not gonna take you three nights. But generally speaking, um. When boards make mistakes on policy, it's some incident happens, some one-off incident that's probably never gonna happen again. But it's so scarring for the board that they want policies to cover. Uh, so generally speaking, um. There are legally mandated policies on the federal level and on the state level. Um, and those are generally the ones that you should have.
If you go to other districts' websites and stuff, sometimes you'll see, and Cave is notorious, like Cave has.
Yeah, they're the opposite.
Some of their policies are, or something similar, five pages long. I, I think their idea is to give you everything and then for you to just not adopt it. There are districts that just flat out adopt policies. I'm not a big fan of that.
You, and when you can, you can tell that because sometimes Cave will actually produce a policy where it'll say, choose A or B. And it's up there on the website saying, choose A or B. They never even chose A or B. They just.
It's just.
Threw it on the, threw it on the website as it was written by Cave without even reading through it carefully enough to understand, oh, wait. It's this or this. We have to actually have a discussion here.
Yeah, and you can subscribe to like the Cave Policy Service so they can review it. It's expensive, but you can, they'll review your policies. Anytime there's a new policy that comes up, you can, you know, you can put it in. So when we went remote. We didn't put any policies in place because it was changing so fast. Our policies were basically our handbooks of how we were operating remotely. And allowed us to change things. If you put something into board policy. It's something where it's, it's gotta come back to the board and change it or modify it.
And probably have two readings and all that. I mean, it's, even if you jump on it. It's, you're still talking probably, what, do you need monthly or by email?
Lower monthly.
Yeah, so if you're gonna, you'd even, if you wanted to change it faster than two months, you'd have to have a special meeting. To get that second reading and faster. So it's, 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 it's something. It's, I think, it, it was something that's rapidly changing and fluid. You're much better off. Just having the superintendent do administrative regulations until the situation kind of settles down and we know what the rules are gonna be.
So there's a, a section in nineteen, nineteen thirty. It's about board communications with school staff. And, uh, and it also talks about public statements as in nineteen twenty. Um, really the idea here is that, um. I, I'm your go-between. So, or staff to, if they wanna get a message up to the board, I'm supposed to be that go-between. If you wanna get a message back to staff, I'm your go-between. Typically, uh, if I'm not the go-between, it's because I'm getting fired, um, or something big has happened. Uh, but typically I'm the go-between. So if you have a message that the board wants to send out to the staff, it typically goes through me. Um, and same thing vice versa. So if it even has an issue, um, it comes through my office to get, to get back out to you. Um. There are, there's a piece in here about, uh, scheduled visits to school. About how you're welcome to do that and you can do that when school is in session. Um, one of the things that they, you have in your policy that is not an inspection or, you know. That, you know, you're doing it in a supervisory capacity, it's really just to get a feel for school life. This is not, and I, I added this, not in a parental capacity because we have several, several parents on this board. Um, that's, that's totally different. You coming into school as a parent is, is different. Than you going to school as, as a board member. As a board member, if you wanna see a classroom, you make those, uh, you know, you make an appointment and you just don't show up. You would do it, you'd, again, go through me, I'd connect you with a principal. You'd make an appointment to get in, we'd notify staff, hey, um, John Mitchell's gonna be popping in and he's gonna have to walk through. He's a board member, just wants to see what's going on, get a sense of school life, uh, what's a preschool room look like at snack time? Uh, what are we talking about? Uh, it's always fun. So that's, that's something that's in there. And then there's a piece on social interactions. Um. Again, this is about that executive session piece. Always be careful if there's something that could become a board decision-making. You know, piece. That, that's not something you wanna have a conversation at a social interaction with. And because of that, what we did, um. Oh, I didn't put it, I thought it was next. Um, I put it, there's a piece in here about handling community concerns. And this is a Stafford flow chart. I thought it was really well done. So I dropped that in there, but I also, Cave has the board member response recommendations. There's two pages. And it's, there, I think it's a little much, however. It's a great start just to say, hey, this is something that might require board action. I really, you know, you know, I can't be involved in the.
This, this is sort of typical of Cave. It's like, that it, it's all, it's all there and then some. Um. It's, and you probably don't, you could probably stop with, probably could end up requiring board action. If I'm involved in a situation at the ground level, I'll be unable to act it as a member of the board. That's enough. You don't need to go into the rest of it. Um. Generally speaking, when you're in this situation. Especially if it's someone who's a personal friend of yours that who's looking for the information. It's not gonna be the most fun conversation you've ever had. So my suggestion is short and sweet. Just saying, you know, I know you're my friend, I, you know, I appreciate your support whenever I'm with the board, but I, I can't talk to you about bullying business. Outside of a board meeting.
The one before with the handling of community concerns, the Stafford flow chart is important for not to. Jump process. So someone, because they know you're a board member, will go to you, you're gonna come to me and then, you know, what I'm gonna say is, I'm gonna say, did they talk to the teacher? And if the answer is yes, okay, did, did they talk to the principal? Like, that, that's not always the case. But if you insert yourself somewhere and you come right to me and expect something, that, and outcome because of it. Every time something happens, they're going to go to you. Um, and that's not just the way you would wanna be in that process yourself. If there's an emergency, different story. It's something that is, you know, um. D C F connected, you.
Safety issue.
Safety issue, you can, you can, you jump. Um, but you know, knowing these things like, hey, encouraging people to follow that process. Um, so a teacher has a chance to handle something. So a principal has a chance to handle something. And then when it gets to me, because they know I'm gonna ask that. What's been done so far? Who have they talked to? Um, and I'm glad to listen to those folks. And then it's the same thing. If it's gonna get to you, that it's going through that process already. The page before that was the positive side of this, was the, the community relations opportunities. Um, just tried, we tried to put some things in here and, and, uh. Brianna could call the art show. I'm not sure if it's gonna be April. This is something that, there's some things that are in here that are P T A. There are some things that are not necessarily board of education. But they're good opportunities for, um, you to see what's to be part of the school environment. Uh, there was a ton of people at the tree light this year where the, the choir sang. It was amazing. Uh, you're always welcome at the commotion ceremonies at both schools. That I would say they're relatively low key and that's intentional. Um, they're nice little ceremonies. Um, the meet and greet, convocation, things like that. So if there's ever a time where, um. You know, especially as, as board chair of Brianna, that you wanna dedicate, hey, you know, we, we'd love to set up a board table just for people to. Give in feedback. I can be there with you. Um, it's just, again, this needs to come back to that policy of how do you. Be more transparent? How can you be more visible? How can we listen more? Um, and what does that look like? I don't know if that's a good example or not, but. Um, so the community relation opportunities are there.
I would say, one thing I would just say, just based on my experience, um. I don't know, I don't know any of you very well just yet, so I don't know what your work, work like and work status are. It does, teachers like to see board members at convocation. They like to feel like. You're, you know, you're, you're part of what, what they're hearing, what they're, you know, that. You're, you're on, you're on the team with them and that you're, you're hearing Phil's remarks to open up the year and that you're kind of there supporting him, you're supporting them. It's, it's not feasible for a lot of people, but I will tell you that my experience is that teachers like it.
So a big piece of your work is budget development. It's gonna be really over the next month. Um. Your job is to adopt the budget. Uh, it goes to, uh, the board of finance after that. Uh, once they adopt that town budget, it goes out for a vote, obviously. Um, it's, it's a process. There's a lot of conversation that goes back and forth. There's a lot of backup. Uh, it is not, in our budget process, Jackie Dr. Jacoby, um, changed this process years ago. Some budgets are done line by line, every single account. That's not the way our budgets are done. They're done, they're done by program. You'll learn that, um, very soon, in two weeks. Um, and those, all of the prior budgets are online. So your approved budgets are there from seventeen to twenty-four. We put them all on, so you can go through and see basically the same snapshot of what it's looked like in the past. Um, what I'll tell you is. I align again back to that framework and it's important for you to know that. As I expend money, I'm transparent with you on a monthly basis and I've been very clear with you about special ed this year. About that program three being very, very tight. It's overrun. It's, it's, there's a lot of money there. Um, that we're in the hole. So. We cannot overspend the budget legally. We cannot overspend the budget. So, which is when I say we have to freeze the budget or it's, it's gonna be within that dollar amount. Or you have to make a decision to say, hey, board of finance, could we have more money? There's, there's a process. That has to go legally to get that done. We can't at the end of the year say, well, four hundred fifty thousand dollars in the hole. It doesn't work that way.
Yeah, I have, I, I have had to work with a board chair, uh. You know, the superintendent to follow that process a couple of times over the years. And the way it can happen, and in a district this size, this is probably the single most, I mean, you can always have things like a boilerplate. It's just unforeseen. Large capital spend. More often what I've seen happen, particularly this, in a smaller district like this district or my home district with Grammy. You have a few kids move into town who are very expensive special ed cases. And while we do, and Phil, imagine when you go through the budget process, I'm sure Phil will talk to you about this more. There is a process whereby we get, we can get reimbursed. For some of those monies if it hits a certain level, but that level's very high. That level is four and a half times your per pupil expenditure. So. If, if three kids move into town. In November, December, and January, and they're all hitting that number. That could throw your budget out of whack. It's just not something you can plan, you can't plan for. You can plan for the kids in place, but you can't plan for something like that.
I've never experienced a budget that we are currently in. In any of my years of administration, whether superintendent or principal.
How tight it is.
So when we talk about putting every non-laps of dollar into zero net account, and it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars, you know it's tight. So this process as it's implemented, and that's why people say, hey, do you have fluff in there? And there's not. There's, we don't have place folders for things. So. Again, I tie all of the things that I present to you to, here's our framework. This is why we're doing it this way. Um, and, and it keeps the, and we use every dollar from our grants. Uh, it keeps our numbers down for the town, but they're still increases. So that budget process is really important for you as part of, one of your major things that you'll do. Um, and I encourage you, especially new folks, if you've not lived that with me. Um, those conversations, if you don't get something, I'm so glad you did this, um, after the last meeting. Uh, we said, can you tell me more about the, cause I talked about special ed last time and just our regular meeting. And Samantha and I just had a conversation over email about what that special ed overage should look like and why. Um, and that's really important for you to know those things. So if you can't explain it, then I even need to do a better job or we need to have a communication. And that's gonna be important in the budget process too, as we go through. Because when someone says to you, why should I vote for the budget? And you wanna be an advocate for your ed, for education, you wanna be able to explain the why. The what's been in there, what's been removed and how that, what that process looked like, uh, and how tedious it is.
There's one piece of information on this score that might fit for the new members, I think might really be useful because you really. People really don't always think about this. There, there's a guy in my town, he's a bright guy. He was, he's a former president of the Connecticut Bar Association. And he's on our board of finance. And he said, well. When our enrollments go down, why don't we just take, you know, why, why doesn't the budget go down by the per pupil for each kid that moves away? And the answer to that is very simple. When one kid leaves the district, unless it is one of these very expensive special ed kids, that doesn't save us any money. The only way we would save money with enrollment going down is we have so many people leave that we can eliminate an entire class at one grade. And it never happens that way. Just demographic, demographically it doesn't. So it's just, it's not a unit cost business. It, it just, it doesn't work like that. And, and so, and it's, I, it's natural, I think, for people to think, well, it. It's, um, the per pupil cost. That, that term almost leads people to think that. Well, if that's the per pupil cost, subtract the pupil, you've saved that money. It, it doesn't work that way. And it's important for people to understand that. Shrinking enrollments, unless they shrink so drastically that we can cut staff, don't save us any money at all.
We saved money in this district. We moved from three or four sections at the elementary school down to two or three. But you could lose fifteen kids in the elementary school.
Overall grades.
Overall grades and you're not saving a dime. You could add fifteen across all grades and your pu, pu, per pupil would come down. But you didn't have to hire anybody either. So it's, 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 there's, it's really, it's a, it's an odd process, but the budget development and your approval is an important part of the process. We did the committees last time, so I, I attached the standing committees in here and the special ed hot committees that are in here. Just put a quick. Board about each, so it's, it's there. The, the list of committees was on this, on the next page with the. With the alternates, sorry, Jim, today. We'll be clear too, if Brendan doesn't call you, if you're an alternate, say we're scheduling a committee meeting. And we need an alternate, we will always let you know. We found good, and this is, I think, moving forward, again, transparency. We had two board members today that were not on the, well, you're an alternate and John was just a, a board member just watching. We just, the way we set up our meetings is just like we do typically. I'll make you a co-host if you're online. Which we're going to do then, I think, mostly online. You'll be a co-host so you can mute and unmute. The people that are not part of the committee, even though you're a board member, you can't be part of the conversation because then you have a quorum. So what, you can watch, you can be on camera, you can nod your head, you can smile, you can do thumbs up. But there's no votes there, but you know, they're, just so you know, that's, it's clear the way I'm operating it. So if anyone ever says, well, there was a lot of people there. There were, but only three were, were there. And I said in the beginning of the meeting today, here are the three members of this committee. They happened, we sit in all that, we chat with them today. It was perfect. Comments, questions about the committees?
I just have a question. I don't, I'm not trying to completely get, so if, if we're an alternate, Brenda will call us and let us know that we need to attend.
Right, correct. So say we go to schedule and it's just, we're just running into, getting to the three people together and we just say, you know what? This is the date that's going to work for Phil. We're going to do it. Anne can't attend today. It's going to be Arthur and Brianna and we're going to call you and see if you, you would be the third that day.
So if I don't hear, I would assume I'm not.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. And I think today she sent that a blanket to remind you about tonight. And it was, that's why typically, yeah, we'll, we'll let you know.
No problem.
I think this, the, there's, this is one of those trust pieces that's around committees too. And I think this is a bit to Brianna's point earlier. Is that. You still have a job to review whether it's curriculum, whatever policy, whatever comes your way when you're not on that committee. A contract, a recommendation to hire a firm. We're still going to give you information at, at the board meeting, but I, I think it's really important that. When those three people are sitting there doing the work, that there's trust, know that they have, you know, positive intentions. They have positive intentions. For making that recommendation. When they come out of committee and they're making a recommendation. They're saying to you, look at this is what we feel is the best. It doesn't mean you can't make something different or catch something. That's not the point. But trust that they're, you know, they had their best intention as they did that work. It saves you time and energy. Again, as a volunteer, if you did every meeting. The folks that are on policy are going to have five meetings this month. So the rest of you, I think, have four, just because of budget thing. So. It's, it's a lot, but trust those good intentions in, in that committee work. That the work is being done and they have the best intentions to do it, but you still have an obligation to look at those materials. As that recommendation comes and moves forward. Odds and ends, we're almost there. The IT stuff, you know, our, our emails are managed by Novus. You should know that, again, those things are, it's, it's Freedom of Information Act, like it's, it's just. Don't use your personal email. If you ever have problems opening something that I've shared with you, sometimes it's simply because you're logged into your Google personal. And not your own, your, your board of ed email. So just be aware of that. This is an odd way of looking at things, but is the reality of it is that I'm your only employee. You evaluate me and me alone. So I'm your employee and then you hire me basically as your CEO to manage everybody else. So I'm the person that goes out and hires. All the other staff members. I have made it very public when I've hired administrators now. I don't need your approval to hire administrator. But I brought them to you for approval where I don't need to. I've probably set a precedent doing that. But I think it's one of those very public things where we have, and. Some of you have been on this process. Who's been on the hiring committee for, for a principal? Does Dan? So it's, we don't mess around when we hire people and, and Anne can speak to this process. I think it's, it's really important for people to know, we have parents on it, we have, it's quite a process. So when I bring it to the board, we're making a recommendation intentionally. But I have the right to hire all those people underneath. That is part of my team. It's a little weird for people to understand that, but that's just the way the setup is. I'm technically your only employee.
And that's how it is for most districts. I mean, all of the districts I represent are set up that way.
The Cave piece down there, just so you, you know, I think as a new person, knowing that, that we're members of Cave, it's just important for you to know that. Some of their stuff is outstanding and some of this stuff, we, we look elsewhere for other references. So. We put our contact information in here. There's the. I will tell you, I spent a lot of money on holidays around here for staff. Because I have an outstanding team. I, I, I truly know that. I do believe that team approach matters. I think it impacts you as well. Hopefully you see it. So these are some of the folks and the secretaries that are around there. The, my assistant Brenda is outstanding. If we miss something, it's not intentional. But these are the folks that, you know, if you are needing something, this is who I'm going to go to. Notice their emails are not there intentionally, mine and Brenda's, because if you're going to go through something. You need information, you should really be going through me. But I give you their names just because if I send you to them for a visit or something like that, it's important for you to know who those folks are. And to Brianna's point, I will put a full staff list in here of roles so you know who's who. The educational acronyms I pulled from Stafford and education, if you are in this world, we are just the masters of acronyms. And that's all I have in the presentation that's here. This is kind of, I think, a, a, a chance where you have your board attorney in front of you for odds and ends without dropping any bombs.
Absolutely.
If you have any questions for Chris or anything about board roles and responsibilities questions you have. Do you have any comments about personal liability for board members?
Sure. So the first thing I think you need to know is for those of you who are married, you need not transfer title to your home, to your spouse. You are protected, fully particularly indemnified for all good faith actions you take as board members under. Connecticut general statutes ten to ten dash three, three, five. That also protects Phil, all of your employees. I have that protection. So this means that, let's, let's say the board decides. I'm going to use the fatal high school examples. Let's say the board decides not to have. A strings program as part of their musical instruments program. And a parent thinks that this is basically ruining your child's opportunity to get a scholarship to UConn to play the violin. Because how is she going to learn violin if you don't have violin lessons? So they see. Well, they'll lose, but even if they won, you would be completely, you would be completely protected. The only exception to that is if you knowingly do something. That's against the law or violates your obligations as a board member. So for example. I have a client who. There was, there was a woman in town and she had a business. And she wanted the board to hire her as a contractor. She, she did after school. Psychological services and so forth. And he refused because she had seen the district. On multiple occasions. Well, it turned out that a board member, so we were meeting in executive session to, I want, we wanted to present our strategy to the board. For dealing with the litigation that she filed against them. Well, it turns out one of the board members went behind the board's back and shared some of the information at that strategy session. With this litigant against the board. And. We basically told her, if we lose this lawsuit and it gets tied to you having done that. You're, you're not going to be identified. We all look, but you won't. So.
It's an important, and I asked that last not to scare folks, but I think it's important. It's why. You really have to make sure you're cautious with conversations outside the board.
Really, once you're speaking, once, once we're being sued as a body, once the board is being sued, really, I shouldn't do any talking for you. That's changed more. But barring that, I mean, if, let, let's say that. You choose a contractor and that contractor does something negligent and God forbid somebody gets hurt. You're indemnified for that. You made a good faith choice of a contractor, the contractor made a mistake. You're not, you're not under any legal risk. Now, the board, the board could, the board could lose the lawsuit, but you isn't, but then the board will pay. Whatever judgment there is. You won't be obligated for any of that out of pocket yourselves as long as you conduct yourself appropriately.
And the board has lost the lawsuit this evening.
That'll be something, volunteering for the board and then having to pay for our loss.
It's why these trains are important. It's why if you have questions, it's important to call. I don't have all the answers, but I'll find an answer for you. If there's something that we don't know. Talk to me. That's why we have a retainer. We, you know, something comes up and it could be something small, but I'm making sure I'm checking a box the right way. That's why I call Chris. Any questions, anything that we want to do tonight, anything that?
And if questions come up after, I know this is a lot to absorb, but I remember the first, the first public hearing I sat on is planning and zoning. Commissioner, I was kind of like. So if you think, if stuff comes up after, just shoot, you know, give Phil a call or shoot him, shoot him an email and if it's a legal question, I'll be happy to give the answer for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
You know, I, I salute you for your willingness to serve. I think. I think, one of the reasons I do it, I do, all I do is represent boards of education. That's, that's my whole. Legal practice and has been the whole time I've been an attorney. And the reason I do it, when people ask me, I said, well, the one thing. When my clients make mistakes, they're honest mistakes. They're trying to do good. They're not trying to take some little old lady's cancer treatment away from her. The other thing when it comes to people like Phil, who I work with closely and the other superintendents, I always say. The people I work for are smart enough. To have been gone into something much more lucrative than this. So they're doing it because they care and I want to be a part of it.
We appreciate that.
Well, thank you all. Nice to meet you. Hopefully you won't be seeing a lot of it, but.
That's all we have on the agenda. I'm not sure if you want.
Did anybody have anything else to add or comment? Look at that. That's great. We learned everything you said and we're going to remember everything. Okay, so then we do need a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Can we have a second?
Second?
Do we need to discuss it? No. On paper. We are adjourned at eight forty-nine.